Order this special meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. And at this time, I would ask that those who choose, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic For which it stands. One nation
A nation Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We'll move right along to new business. Brooke?
Sure, thank you. So in essence, I sent around a copy of the latest MSBA enrollment numbers. And I also want to introduce Peter Mello to you. If you haven't met Peter before, Peter's joining us tonight and he'll be joining us again on Wednesday night. And he is our lawyer who from Murphy, Hesse, Chumi, and Lahane, who is specialized in just helping us to work through the MSBA project. And what's nice is of course, like, you know, as I walk away and your new superintendent comes in, he will be your constant throughout the whole process. So we're really thrilled to have him join us tonight. And he, of course, is always going to be there to answer questions that you might have, that your superintendent might not have access to. He's got much more seasoning, of course, with this kind of thing than than a superintendent would have. So it's just really nice to have him online tonight. And Peter, I have to thank you for the number of times, number of phone calls I've made to you in the last two years. So thank you for that, too, because you've always been a source of strength and support and just so appreciative of everything that you bring to the table. So it's nice to have you join us tonight for this part of the meeting. So I just want to speak just quickly to this and then I'll turn it over and Peter may have a comment or two to make, too. So in essence, when a superintendent writes the statement of interest, you know, at the beginning of the process, you put in what you think might be a generic number of how many students might be attending the high school in years moving forward. But you don't really, like, you don't have any algorithms that you run it through. You don't have other than just your data points that you can take a look at. And you can try to project based on, you know, sentence numbers and that kind of thing. But there isn't a real science to it, unlike MSBA, who has a science to it. So, you know, I put my numbers in, I was, it was over a thousand students is what I was hoping to project, you know, for in our HS in future years. And I had looked around at the communities. I knew the type of developments that were on the horizon. But of course, those are still out there and, you know, some of them, you know, we can see are closer than others are. And I think MSBA really is really looking to say, well, what's actually permitted? We're not, this is not a what-if type scenario. We have to be really conservative here and concrete. And so we got a number in a couple of weeks ago and it was in the 800 range. And I thought that that was too low. And so we called for an extra meeting. And then I know that a couple of you have sat in on that. So certainly feel free to speak to it if you, if you feel that I've missed anything here. They asked us then for some more data points. And so in our offices, we gathered up all kinds of other information and sent it off to kind of bolster our case to try to get the number up. And then they sent it back the most recent number, which is the number that you're looking at tonight, that we're hoping that you'll give authorization for, for Kathy and I to sign off on and to push it forward. It's important that this authorization goes through because it will now, once that is done, that is complete, it will complete the full process for the eligibility module, which is so exciting. It's just three years of a lot of work and to see it come through to fruition like this is just unbelievable. So we are anticipating that we hopefully were potentially sitting on the agenda for the April 14th MSBA meeting, which is just terrific. If we don't make it on that, onto that agenda, for some reason we fall off, then it'll be into the June meeting, hopefully. So we've got our fingers crossed that everything is going to continue to go as smoothly as it has and that we're ready to move into the feasibility study. That will be a real shift for our school building committee. It'll be shift for you. And certainly your new superintendent, you know, will be able to take the reins and run with this next phase. All, everything is lined up for it. It's very, very exciting. So it's kind of nice to see this part come to closure now and ready to take next steps to the fruition of this process and this project happening. So we come to you tonight. I sent the letter to you and the, a copy of the certification, the enrollment certification that they're looking for Kathy and I to sign and get back right away. So with that, Peter, I'm not sure if you've got a comment or two that you'd like to add in here. And then if you've got questions, we'll take questions.
Oh, well, thank you, Brooke. No, I think you summarized it really well. Obviously, as you mentioned, this is one of the required steps necessary to proceed past the eligibility period. And it sort of sets a baseline of sorts from which project budget and size are determined. And the agreement that's included in the meeting materials is consistent with, yeah, I noticed online pretty readily, an agreement that NAC light signed with MSBA a couple of years ago was virtually or entirely verbatim. So it's pretty straightforward. This is part of the, you know, the standard eligibility phase process and it's required to move us into the next phase.
Great. Thanks, Peter. So with that, Kathy, I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion and a second and we can take some questions, however you see fit.
I think that's the way to go. Joseph, would you make the motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to accept the Massachusetts School Building Authority and the Shobba Regional School District. Shobba Regional High School Design Enrollment Certification authorized and the Shobba Regional School Committee Chairperson and Superintendent to execute same.
Second.
Steve Rubenstein seconded. Are there any questions for either Brooke or Peter? Joseph?
Yeah, I wonder if the council could just enlighten us as to what other school building projects he's worked on in his time working with the MSBA.
Well, I've been involved in a few cases, litigation. Have been involved in a pretty lengthy litigation that was spawned from an accelerator repair project. You know, familiar with the MSBA's process from a couple of other, I mean, I've been doing, representing municipalities and school districts for, you know, approximately 15 years. So, you know, it's, I couldn't identify every instance in which I've been involved with the MSBA, but I know the lawyers over there, deal with them, you know, pretty routinely and have for years. And I've also, you know, one of my niche practice areas over the years has been construction and particularly construction litigation. So I'm pretty familiar with the process. And not to mention, MSBA, as you all probably have come to know, is governed under a pretty copious, detailed regulations. And they follow that, the regulatory process pretty stringently. And so the process is very, you know, well laid out and the like, so.
Thank you. All set, Joe?
Yeah, thank you.
Amy?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there is a reason why the vote is coming to the school committee before the building subcommittee, since we're meeting on Wednesday? Is it a timing thing or is that just normal course of events?
I think it's just, I think it's just the timing thing, to be honest with you. I think that we knew that the meeting was going to be held tonight. I don't think that this is something that necessarily had to go to the school building committee first, because this really doesn't have anything to do with the school building committee. This is really the school committee authorizing.
All set, Amy? Amy, are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Leah?
Just very quickly, at our last school building committee meeting, I think that somebody made mention of the fact that if major construction projects were to be permitted within this next module, that they would be able to take that into consideration. You know, if they built a 300 unit housing project in Bolton next year, that they could maybe finagle changes. Is that right?
That was my understanding as well, Leah, from that meeting.
Yeah. So we have a little bit of time, is what I'm saying. The 9:25 is the number, but they were saying that if something surprises us, then they are a little flexible for a little bit of time.
Elaine?
My knowledge of how the enrollment calculations are done and how school buildings are done is pretty rudimentary. But I thought I remembered reading something that said something along the lines of, you can build a bigger school if you want to. You just won't get funding from the MSBA to do it. Could someone explain sort of how that fits together?
Peter might be the better one suited to respond to that than I would.
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, this number serves as a baseline of sorts from which project budget and size are determined. And those, those kinds of questions are evaluated at different stages of the process, including in connection with the preparation of the feasibility study and the like. And I think as a general proposition, you know, you can, once in working with the MSBA, there's been a scope or, you know, a budget determined. If you want to go outside of that at your cost, that you can. If you want to add, for example, to a project scope, there's sometimes latitude to do that. It just won't be reimbursed. So, so I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. It does. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote.
Point of order, Kathy? Just, can you just repeat what it is we're voting on?
Joseph made a motion to start. Joe, would you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I'll read it a little bit slower this time. I move to accept the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Shobba Regional School District, the Shobba Regional High School Design Enrollment Certification and authorized and the Shobba Regional School Committee Chairperson and Superintendent to execute same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so so we're voting to authorize the signing of the enrollment report. And I'll start with Mike.
Yes.
And just, just, just to, you know, in the interest of being absolutely crystal clear, I just want to make sure, unless I missed it, that this vote authorizes someone to sign the enrollment certification.
That's right.
I think that's what the motion reads, yes. Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Bitch?
I'm just going to say it a little slower. Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, passed unanimously. Brooke, again, thank you and your team for the incredible amount of work that you've put into this and for getting us to this point. It is mind boggling, especially in light of all the other things we've been dealing with. Thank you so much and for Todd and Anne Marie and Pat and everybody who's contributed.
It's just such a great team. This is just an amazing team. And I am so proud that we are at this point. So looking forward to April 14th. I really, really am. That's just going to close that chapter. But I'm so excited about the next chapter for Nishoba, starting with that feasibility study. It's just, you're so ready for it. It's so exciting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Nice to see you.
You, thanks.
So the next agenda item is some unfinished business. Approval of the Superintendent Search Committee composition. Approval of the Superintendent Search Committee application. An approval of the Superintendent Search Application Letter. So I'm going to turn this over to Mary.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. And as we, the personnel subcommittee met today at four o'clock. And as we all know, that committee is, subcommittee is comprised of Kathy Cody and I. And we took the work that we did as a committee last Wednesday in our long process of deliberation that started from Brett's recommendation that we think about criteria and especially in regard to parents and the process. And Kathy had said that she would make the process unconvoluted. And I believe she did. And so we, we have recommendations. We voted on these three, the three documents that we're going to be looking at. And I'm hoping that we have done what the will of the committee and the desire of the committee and that this, we won't have to get into as lengthy a discussion. Certainly, we're certainly open to that discussion, but I think, I think you're going to find that we, that we did it. So Kathy, are you going to put up the documents and?
Do you want to do the motions first and go from there or?
All right, well, Kathy's the secretary, so you're going to make the motions, correct?
I didn't know I was the secretary. Oh, I do the minutes. I guess I am the secretary. I think it was unanimous vote back in the early days here. Okay. So we're going to start by, I'm going to share the screen and put up the hang on, let me get everything organized here. Mary, I have, I don't see everybody. So if there are questions, I'm trusting that you will.
I'll try. I'm working on it.
Most people here. Okay, so my motion is that I move that the school committee accept the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee regarding the composition of the Superintendent Search Screening Committee as follows. One elementary, one middle school, and one high school teacher. One central office administrator, one principal. One elementary, one middle school, and one high school parent. One parent of a student receiving special education services. One parent with experience that would contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. One town administrator and four school committee members. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Elaine?
Yep.
Okay. So Mary?
So so this, at this point, we would entertain questions about this. As you can see, we took the ideas that the committee brought forward and especially in regard to our parent members. And although the committee is large, it'll be either 14 or 15 and likely 15 people. We will all endeavor, I'm sure, I'm speaking for everyone who could possibly be on this committee and Dorothy Presser, the MAS C representative, will also help us. But we'll be talking a little bit more about the time commitment here. And Dorothy has told us that meetings can last a long time. So here's where the number comes in. The more people you have, the more people who might like to voice opinions, et cetera, and the longer meetings will take. But in, in the view, in the desire for inclusivity, I think, I know that we went with the larger number. And we'll just, when it comes to the time of the screening committee, do our very best to say, to help each other stay as focused as possible. So with that question, so Steve has a question, Kathy, or I can just call on you.
You're the chair of the
All right, I'm, go, Steve.
You're the chair.
Okay, looking, looking at these five buckets, we're going to pull some, one person from each of these buckets. Theoretically, theoretically, those, all five of those people could come from one of the three towns. Theoretically. And that's, yeah. So I just want people to understand that that's entirely a possibility. Or two of the towns or, you know, one town might be shut out. It depends on who applies and who gets picked out of the bucket.
That's true. I think that the likelihood of with five and five different buckets, any, any town getting left out would be slim. I didn't, we haven't run those kind of statistics. But in the, in an effort to have this as fair as possible and to bring in the criteria and to remember that, yes, we are three towns, but more importantly, we are one district. So Leah?
Thanks, guys. I have a, just a quick clarifying question and then a probing question. Can you just clarify for me, how many parents will sit on the committee? Is it five?
That's, that's the understanding. I mean, I guess if, so let's, let's just run theoretically. Someone is in more than one bucket and is chosen and then is chosen again as a parent. And this will all be, so we can all see this, that would mean that someone else would be chosen. We would go back into the bucket. So what we're trying to do here is something that Dorothy Presser had stressed, that we have equal number of educators and non educators, educators and parents. And we have that. And so that's, that's really, really important. In fact, we've got something, we've got a five by five by five, which has a little bit of, you know, squareness to it, almost.
And so just another quick clarifier, Mary, would you, it's going to be lottery. Once, once we get people into these different buckets, it will be lottery, but do we put people in multiple buckets? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. So if someone has, you know, a child in elementary, middle school, and high school, three buckets, and also a student receiving special needs, another bucket. And perhaps if that person has diversity, equity, and inclusion experience, another bucket. So we're looking, these attributes are not exactly qualifications, but I guess the other important point is that these people aren't necessarily representing, and this goes back to Steve's question, and not representing towns. And they're not representing all of the, if they're, if they've got a child in elementary school, they're not representing necessarily all of the children in all the elementary schools. Because as we remember in regard to this, this is all done in what we would call executive session. It will help, will help everybody to understand that. So the confidentiality, in other words, people won't be going back and, and sharing anything about this with a constituent group. But in themselves, in who they are and who their children are, they have certain qualifications that will get them into one of the buckets. So somebody else had a question, too. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. And again, thanks to you and to Kathy for putting in the extra time and effort required to bring this as a recommendation to the school committee. One comment and one question. My comment is, again, I'll just reiterate, I think that I think that we are making a mistake by omitting the presence of a student and having student voice as part of this decision. But if this is the will of the committee, then it's the will of the committee. And my second point, which is a question, is I just want to be sure that, you know, in this discussion of buckets, if that's the term we're using, do we have that exact same categorization in our survey so that that's a very quick determinant? For our
We do. We do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Steve?
Yeah, let's say you pick someone from bucket A, which is elementary school. And that, but their application is also in two or three other buckets. You may have said this before. Does that application get removed from the other buckets? Before you then choose from that bucket? Because what happens if you get one person, gets pulled from three buckets, let's say?
Right. So, so in that case, if the same name comes up, and this is all going to be done, none of this is going to be done in private. This is going to be done in front of all of us and on, you know, on Zoom. So people can, can look at this. So somebody's name, I mean, has come up again. So that means that, that we're hoping that a leader is going to be very helpful in this process, that she would pick someone else. I mean, one of the things that, that could have meant would be that we could have a parent who might really be in three buckets. And so we wouldn't need as many parents. The reason that I really wanted to have five parents is for that parity of non educators. And, and we have that, and that's, that's really why I really, I pushed for that, to have five. Questions? Steve, is it anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. So Joe has a question.
Joe, you I know that, I know that. I'm trying to get the mute, trying to get the mute up. Going back to the application, I, I'm still a little bit uncertain as to some of the questions that are being asked on the, the application. In particular, question eight, where it says, explain your interest in joining the screening committee. What relevance does that have if this is going to be a lottery? Why do we, what, who's, I mean, I, if it's a lottery, is somebody going to be vetting these applications and removing applications that they don't deem to be appropriate for this particular committee? If it's purely by chance, what difference does it make what their interest is? They're showing an interest. I put my name in the lottery. I want to be on the screening committee.
So I think that that would be a good point, good point. However, some of that information, as the people get chosen, gives, starts to give an indicator to Dorothy Presser and then perhaps later on to membership in, of the screening committee. But that, that is, that is a good point, Joe. But what we were doing right now is every, all of these are interrelated, but we were just, the motion is just for this, correct, Kathy?
It's for composition and we can, we have another motion coming up about the application. So we might decide to change the application.
So Joe, would that be okay?
Oh, that's fine with me. I, that's fine with me. This is just composition. That's fine with me. Thank you.
Okay, all right. No more hands. Oh, Leah, yes.
Just really quick, I wanted to say that if people are concerned about the balance being tipped toward one community over another, that you do have a slot for school committee members that will represent each town. And so that will be at a minimum, providing balance across the three communities. Just as a reminder, yeah.
Yes. And, yes, that's, that's a good point. So yeah. Oh, Amy has a, her hand up.
Yep. I had a question, and forgive my ignorance about this, but is having a child who has special education needs the same as being a CPAC member? Is every parent who
Every parent who, who has a child participating in special education is a member of CPAC. But, but one of the reasons we put it, and I can't, you know, initials are so in these days. And so Kathy has POS, R E S. So that also to make the point that people are not representing, the way, as I explained before, not representing a group. However, having knowledge of and understanding of what special education is about. So we were looking, the committee wanted, and we're looking for that kind of, those attributes.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank both of you for capturing so well what came out of our meeting, our last meeting and coming up with a process that is, I think it's going to uh, is, I think it's going to work well, so.
Good. Thanks, thanks for some ideas that that came from everybody, just general ideas, not discussed ahead of time, but thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I ke- I hear people talking, but it's none of you and no, no one's hands are raised. So I think we're, we're ready Kathy.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee regarding the composition of the Superintendent Search Screening Committee as follows. One elementary, one middle school and one high school teacher, one central office administrator, one principal, one elementary, one middle and one high school parent, one parent of a student receiving special education services, one parent with experience that would contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in promoting diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, one town administrator and four school committee members. That was the motion. And, um, I will, uh, go through the the role and, um, take the votes. So let me see, let's start with Leah.
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes, and thank you for your hard work on this.
Steve? Steve, vote. I'll come back. Okay, all right. I know Steve has another meeting he's going to hop on to. Um, Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yeah, so let me echo, uh, Ms. San Felipe's sentiments as well. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Uh, Rich?
Thank you all. Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Brett, we're going to name this model after you. It's the Brett Collins Screening Committee Selection Model. So that'll be part of the record. Um, Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, at this point, I would like to move to the, if there are no objections, move to the revised, uh, letter. And I'm going to make the motion, motion two. I move that the school committee accept the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee regarding the letter to Neshoba Regional School District families relative to applying to the screening committee. Second. Sharon seconded. Okay, um, so, um, I sent this out ahead of time, but just to review, it's different than the other one. And, um, as it occurred to me, we were really, I was really working off the 2016 model and it was clear that we needed to do some, some, um, some upgrading. So the first paragraph, uh, goes through the first, um, step of the process. It contains a link to the online survey in case, in case folks haven't had an opportunity to complete it yet. And I know Mary sent out a reminder to the school committee, um, to to participate, and I hope you will. Um, and then a reminder that the other opportunity to participate will come when we have finalists and we will have public forums. So the next step is to organize the screening committee. And Dorothy Presser from MASC is our search consultant and will facilitate all screening committee meetings. And then this goes through the composition that we just went through. Um, and talks about the parent. The Personnel Subcommittee will invite town administrators to participate and to decide among themselves which one of them will serve on the screening committee. Um, teacher representatives will be chosen by a process through the, um, the Education Association and the principal and central office administrator will let the Personnel Subcommittee know of their interest through the superintendent's office. And then we're going to announce membership at the March 24th meeting. Um, this paragraph outlines of the process that we're going to follow for selecting parents. And then, um, once we approve the letter, Leah, if you could send me a link, I'll put it here, we'll have a hot link, and then I'll also send this to you to have up on the thing, um, for the application. Um, they, in in consulting with Dorothy Presser, um, right now, the plan is to hold meetings virtually, uh, but the meetings are a couple of months away. Uh, so there may be some changes. Um, and then we have the date and time of the screening committee member, meeting, uh, orientation, I'm sorry. And then Dorothy says to expect about a 90-minute meeting. Then, uh, the dates of all the other, um, screening committee meetings to screen applications, select and interview semifinalists. They'll begin at six and may last up to three hours. So it's just to give people an idea of the time commitment here. Um, the tasks are as follows. Attend the orientation from MASC, receive a charge from the school committee, formulate questions for the semifinalists, uh, interviews, and then finalize questions and select semifinalists, interview semifinalists, and then select finalists after the last interview on May 18th. Um, there's a link to the website and people can go there and, uh, click on the application. The deadline to submit, we've adjusted all of our deadlines, um, because, um, uh, we had to adjust our time. And so Sunday, the 21st. And I also, in light of the change, I also, um, asked Dorothy to keep this online survey open until Friday, March 19th. And then we thank everybody for their participation and remind them about the public forums. So, um, that's the new letter. Um, so Mary, you can.
So we're not going to go through this line by line.
I just did.
No, I know you No, 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 you did. You went through the changes. I meant, I meant that we, we weren't going to go through the whole, because those are the things that were different from what you had read before, uh, and heard about before. So at this, at this point, questions on the letter. We're doing, the, the application will be after this, love a separate. Oh, okay, Mike has a question. Got Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Um, third paragraph down, it says the screening committee will be comprised of up to 15 individuals. And then it was the composition which we just loaded on. I guess I have mild concern with up to, there's a little bit of ambiguity there, and I'm wondering if the up to is contingent on sufficient numbers of applicants. And if that's the case, maybe we should amend it to say, assuming sufficient number of applicants, the screening committee will be comprised of 15 individuals. Is that, was
That's, yeah, that's a good, a good suggestion, don't you think Kathy? That's something that
No, I think it's a terrible idea. That's why I'm writing, assuming, what did you say, Mike, sufficient?
Uh, yeah, uh, assuming receipt of sufficient applications.
Assuming I'll fix the spelling, don't worry. So check, yeah, receipt of sufficient numbers of applications, Mike?
Yeah, no, yeah, number.
Number.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, and then you
Of, do you want to leave it like this or you want to put up to again? Is this fine like this then?
I think, I, I guess my thought is that if we have sufficient numbers of applications, then we can just say it will be comprised of 15 members.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's good.
Anything else? Oh, Elaine has a question.
Um, yeah, and so in the fourth paragraph, um, the terminology for the last parent there is parent with background in diversity, equity and inclusion, um, which is fine, but I actually really liked the terminology Kathy used when we were talking about composition. It was something to the effect of parent with a perspective that will help the district further its dedication to diversity, equity, inclusion, or it was something like that.
Yep, yep, yep. Hang on, hang on, I gotta find my copy of it. Here it is. Okay, hang on. Cause I'm going to fix it right now. Um, all right, so the survey actually says, um, do you have experience that would contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in promoting diversity, equity and inclusion? So, so do, 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 parent with experience that would contribute? You want that whole thing there?
Sure. I, I know that's really long, but I just really like that was stated.
And that, this is some of what took us some time to trying to find, um, the right description. So this will bring the letter in, um, concert with the application too. So that's a good thing.
All right, let me see. Parent with experience that would contribute, that will contribute. Contribute to the screening committees, oh. I have to change that there then. Hang on. Right. That will contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability and promoting diversity, equity and inclusion.
Okay.
Okay.
Not nods and and
Sharon.
Thumbs, thumbs up.
Yeah, yeah.
Who has, who has a hand up?
Sharon.
So my question is actually going back to, um, the modification that was made before with Mike's suggestion. And my, the question is, do, should we then add, um, word I can think of to describe it is a disclaimer, is something that says very clearly that the commit, the screening committee could be smaller if there was fewer applications or something to that effect, so that we don't have the potential, I mean, I, I find it hard to believe it would happen, but there, I guess there is potential that if we didn't have enough applicants, the committee could be smaller. And then would people say, wait a minute, you said it was going to be a committee of 15 and it's actually a committee of 12? So do we need, my question is, do we need to clarify that as well? Or is, are we just, we'll get enough and we don't need to do that?
Do you want to clarify that? We can, I could make this, end a sentence here and insert Sharon's sentence here. And then say the committee will include.
So wouldn't putting back up to, up to 15 individuals just cover us?
What say you?
Can I ask a question?
Hey, Amy.
I'm sorry, Mary, I get, I'll shut up. I'm used to being in charge.
That's all right. That's okay. Amy?
Well, I'm just wondering if the scenarios where this would happen, is it, if, are we anticipating that if there's one of our buckets that doesn't get any applications, that would result in less than 15 spots on the committee? Or is it more that the from other positions? I mean, I'm just trying to understand how we wouldn't get to 15.
That's, uh, I, I, I can't picture that we won't get to 15, but so Kathy and I had this exact same discussion that we're having now. So, and, and that's why we had the up to 15, that we wouldn't have sufficient applications. The only, the only reason I think that, um, I think being very clear on the the commitment and having a little bit more clarity on the, um, how long the meetings are, you know, that could cut into the number of parents who who, um, might apply. But I still think, still think we're going to have some. You go, go ahead, Amy.
Well, I, I guess my thought is if we could further clarify this by saying that if, um, how we would handle a situation where one of these buckets doesn't get any applications, would it be filled with, you know, if we get, let's say we get a bunch of people checking off the box for high school parent, but none for the pre-K elementary? Like, would, are we going to leave that seat vacant or will we fill it with parents, other, other parents?
I don't have an easy answer for that. Um, I mean, if, if there were, I'm just thinking that there would be at least, at least one.
I think there will be two, but I, I'm just trying to understand how we would even get to a situation where, situation where it'd be less than 15, and that's one, one possibility I could see.
Yeah, well.
Just say if, maybe it would help to clarify if, if there are, whether or not that, that spot would remain vacant if no applicants fit a bucket or we would pull from another bucket. Yep.
Mary?
I know, I just, uh, the answer to that is, um, I think what we're doing right now is making this the same thing we did before. Oh, Kathy wants to talk, but I really believe this is, um, making it more complicated than it needs to be. And I, I don't think we, you know, we need some of this. And, um, anyway, so Kathy wants to talk.
Yeah, uh, last time around, we did not get any community member come forward. And so that's why the committee was 11 instead of 12. So, um, I agree with Mary, if we don't have, I'm assuming that we will, but if we don't, um, then we go with what we have. Um, and I think that assuming we see the sufficient number of applications, uh, the, the committee will be comprised of 15 individuals. I think that covers it. And, um, um, I, I, again, I, I, I think that I'm concerned about making it more, um, uh, complicated than it needs to be. And, um, I think the, from my point of view, the important thing is the balance between non educators and and educators and the fact that there were two areas that people wanted to add to, um, in in terms of representation, parent representation, someone representing, um, children receiving special education services and, um, diversity. And, and that has been addressed. And so
Oh, Amy, Amy gave a thumbs up.
Okay. Any other edits on the letter?
So Joseph?
Yeah, I'm not looking to edit this thing at all. And, uh, I, I agree with Dr. McCarthy and Chairman Cody Yan that, you know, I don't want to convolute this. I mean, it, whether we have 15 or 13 or 14, I don't think it really makes any difference. I mean, our regional school agreement provided for eight school committee members, yet we operated with seven for almost a year. So I, I think we're concentrating and we're getting, you know, disdirected on, on small matters like this. I mean, if you really want to, if this was really a concern to the committee, why not just put some language in that says we'll have X number of committee members, but this number could change within the sole discretion of the school committee.
Well.
Do you see Sharon, Mary?
Oh, Sharon, I didn't. No, Sharon.
I apologize for adding in complication. I wasn't, um, trying to add in any complication to it. I, I would, I was just trying to make sure that we had our bases covered that, you know, somebody couldn't come back and say, well, wait a minute, there's a discrepancy here. It sounds like that's all covered anyway. And I can't imagine, as you said, that we would not have enough applications. So it, I think it's a non-issue. I apologize for bringing it up.
No, it was something that we needed to think about, but I, you know, we, we cannot, and, and I want to call everybody's attention to the very bottom. Um, please send your questions to Dr. Mary McCarthy. So I'm satisfied that Dr. McCarthy can field all the questions. And I think we've done as a committee, a really good job of revising what we did, um, five years ago. And, um, I, I think that, that Mike's addition sort of, um, you know, covers a lot of ground. Um, so.
So I, I agree, and I think, um, Sharon, that that by putting what Mike has in there, it's, it's somewhat of a disclaimer right there. Because it's saying that we do need to have enough applicants to be able to have 15. So it, it does say that. And, um, but we've already seen but we've already seen, just in emails that have come to all of us, that there are quite a few parents who would very much like to volunteer to be a member. And and I, I, I trust that, that that interest is, is very real and they, and they will apply. So.
Alita had her hand up, Mary.
Oh, Alita.
Just, you go. Just, just one quick edit down at the bottom.
Oh, your, Mary, Mary's email address, you need one more C in there.
Oh, Mary, no wonder you're not getting all the emails I send you, what's it say?
It's MMCC.
You know, that is, that, that happens.
MMCC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Get it without emailing her, here you go. There you go, all right, now, get those cards and letters coming in.
Thank you, Alita.
Thanks, Alita.
Okay, so, we got a vote?
Are we ready to vote?
Oh, are we ready to vote? Any more questions? Don't be intimidated. You have questions, you go ahead, you go ahead, I, well, I know this committee is not intimidated, so.
All right, did we lose Mr. Rubenstein? I know we had another meeting.
No, he's here.
Okay, start with him, Steve.
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Me, yes, Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
Very good, you guys are scaring me, you're doing a good job tonight. All right, get rid of some of this stuff and then we'll, we'll save that. Whoa, look at that. All right, quit that, don't do that. Quick, 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 and I don't need this anymore, and so I want this. All right, so let me, all right, I gotta get this over here. So everybody was sent a PDF of the application. And so, anything in the first introductory section that anyone would like to comment or edit?
I don't believe you need the comment after screening committee. Biable candidates for the screening committee must be able to commit. All dates listed.
That was a good one, Rich. Good catch.
Surprised I beat Mr., Mr. Gleason, but I think I might be speaking too quickly.
Not seeing any hands, so.
You can always circle back.
Okay.
This might be a style thing, but if you scroll up to the top, in the last sentence, the first paragraph, it says, and commit to keep the proceedings completely confidential. You might want to say, and commit in keeping the proceedings completely confidential. But that might be just.
Yeah, it's just stylistic.
Okay. I know you're wicked smart, Mr. Dr. McCarthy.
No, I'm an English teacher. Oh, yeah, and I am wicked smart, but I am an English teacher.
Oh, all right, name, email address, town of residence, child's or children's school level, check all that apply. Student who receives special education services. Do you have experience that will? I changed that in the letter. Contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability, oh, I meant. So you got ability twice, we need to change that, you have experience that will contribute to the school committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability.
We talked, yeah, we, we talked about that.
Did we?
Yeah, you and I. And then, and then I said, that's, that does say it, yes, it's got the same word, but.
All right, let's see who's wicked smart, what's another word for ability?
Why don't you say capability for the first one, the screen, screening committee's capability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability?
What do you think, Mary?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so Rich is wicked smart.
Two, two points, Rich, yeah.
Capability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated, all right, okay? If you answered yes to number six, please explain. Now, we're going to come back to eight, but let's look at nine, submitting the application, there are all the dates. And we, I don't think I need this here. There are all the dates and times and time commitment. And then finally, in submitting this application, I understand and agree that my responsibility is to serve in an advisory capacity to the school committee. I'm not representing a constituency or my own interests. Selection of semifinalists for the superintendency will be based on the extent to which they are able to demonstrate the qualities, skills, and qualifications developed from focus groups and survey responses. Focus groups. Should that be focus groups with a the thing that shows its does that need the possessive after?
No.
No, no, you don't need a possessive after focus groups?
No.
All right, okay. I agree to keep all proceedings, candidates' materials, and deliberations completely constitutional. Yes, I understand and agree to the aforementioned conditions. So.
So let's go back.
Yes, go ahead. What are we going back?
We have, we have questions, so.
I'm sorry.
So Mike has a question first, but we are going to go back to eight.
Yeah, you want to do that first, get the questions for?
Mike is, is yours about eight, number eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go, let's go back to eight, and then like. I would like to just make a comment first and say that Joe's point is a good one, very good one, and I don't know, maybe this becomes optional, because, no, we're not going to, we're not going to screen by the, the answers to this.
Yeah, no, I, that's a good point. Can I, can I quickly poll the committee to see if people?
Well, let's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, just, just let's hear what Mike was going to say and then, and then go on to that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I agree, I think if we allow this, if we allow the, that kind of feedback to be used as a tool to screen, and we, and we look back, it's, it's going to introduce bias, right now, all of these are sort of factual. And if we're looking at eight, we say, oh my gosh, this, this person looks great, even though we hadn't thought about this on March fifteenth, I, I just think that that introduces the very bias that we're trying to eliminate, so I agree, I think we should just toss it.
Okay, so Kathy, do you want to poll?
Yeah, all right, let me see everybody here now, let me go over here and see. All right, let's just do it this way, if you feel we ought to delete number eight, give me a thumbs up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, Joseph, are you going to vote? You gotta, you were deleted.
Yeah, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I concur with striking question eight. But if you're going to strike question eight, do we not have to strike question seven as well? Considering the, considering the fact that, that question seven also is, it, it, it's not even required to be answered in this thing.
Hang on, all right, so I think we've decided to get rid of eight, correct?
Yes.
Let me do this, so this is easy, just delete it. Okay, now question seven. All right, so let me get people back here now, how did we go, hello, all right, so question seven, if someone says they have experience, why not have to qualify that, that is more specific, I think, than someone's interests, which is more I don't know, I, I, I see it as different, but what do you guys think?
Amy, Amy has a question.
Yep.
I mean, I tend to agree with Joe, that I don't, if, if this is a lottery and you're just putting names into a bucket, then we don't need further qualifications or clarification, but once people are chosen to be in this position, it might make sense to get this information from them, so you can share with Dorothy Presser, which I think was the original intent for these types of questions. That's my two cents.
Okay, Leah has her hand, please.
I, I think I would agree, except that I, my, my, how do I say this, my perception of my own experience might actually, might be inappropriate, and so I might say to you, well, I'm a high school social studies teacher, and I teach a constitutional law class, and I teach a political science, and I think that, you know, I have a lot of diversity mindsets, and so to me, that makes my experience qualified. But to the committee, it might not be enough, it, it's not really relevant experience, and therefore that parent's name would go into a diff, into one of, it would go into one of the parent buckets, but it wouldn't go a second time into this DEI bucket.
So you're not disqualifying the person altogether, they're a parent, so they have a child in the system, so they would go either in one of the other four buckets, so to speak.
Yeah, but I do think you need, we need to actually use some level of vetting for this particular question, but I would defer to Elaine's expertise here.
I don't see Elaine.
Elaine had to start her other meeting.
Oh.
So she'll be back.
Okay, we'll still be here?
Well.
Hmm, okay, so, yeah, so I have another meeting too, so Rich and then Joe.
Just really quick, quickly, can't we just combine the questions and just say, what if any experience you have that will contribute to it, and just leave it as a long paragraph? And people can explain what they have and how it could add for it. Although I, you know, I think that might be better than make it just.
Yeah.
Just really quickly, from a Google Form standpoint, it would actually be easier for you guys to pinpoint these, like, sorted out in the spreadsheet, if you have the two questions, I think that was the original thinking.
So, so you're, just Leah, will you clarify what you just said, you?
Yep.
Oh, I, I see, yeah, I, I see what you mean, you mean, six and seven is what you're talking about.
Yeah, so like to have question six, because people might type into the long paragraph, I actually don't have any diversity experience, but I'm really interested in this, and they might go off on a tangent and just, and fill that box, and you are going to have to go through them manually and sort them. Whereas question six will allow you to sort the spreadsheet really easily.
Yep, okay, so Elaine's back, and we don't know for how long, but. Okay, I know, but I just want to say to Elaine that, you know, we want to get to you and get your opinion on this, Joe?
Perhaps it's a typo, but the, the way this application is prepared, it says, you're required to answer question six, but you're not required to answer question seven. So I, I choose to keep, answer question six because I'm required to, but I choose not to answer question seven. Does that disqualify me at that point? I, it, it, if it's a lottery, what difference does it make what the answer is, if you have diversity, if you have diversity and equity and inclusion experience, you go into that particular, I understand what you're saying, we need to vet it, but again, people, you're asking people to, to qualify their, their qualifications. Who, who's going to be doing that, and are people going to be automatically, or are they going to be removed from this particular selection group if it doesn't meet whoever is going to be vetting these applications? If it's a lottery, it's a lottery, it's pure chance. Again, I understand that we're, we're sort of relying upon the integrity and the veracity of those who fill out these applications, but I, I think the risk in that regard is minimal. And I, I don't understand, if we're doing a lottery, why are we asking for explanations? I, I put down something that's completely inappropriate. But it's a lottery, I'm, I'm just, I'm putting my name in for appropriate chance, I don't understand the necessity of question seven.
Okay, so, so Kathy, you want to talk first, and then we'll go to Mike?
Yeah, I think in this case, we're not, someone, if, if someone is a parent, they're in one of four other categories in addition to this. So if someone just has an interest and has read books on it, that's different to me than somebody who has, I'll just call it experience in the field, if you will. So if someone's, this is not someone's only chance, you're a parent. So you're a parent of an elementary, middle, or high school kid, so that's three, that's another option. If you're the parent of an elementary kid who received it being special education services, then you're in two. So if you're not in this one, you're in another one, so that's I see as the safety net. You're still in the lottery. You're not, everyone who checks that box that they have experience with diversity, equity, and inclusion has also, it, it has another qualifier, so. But I'd want to know if it's somebody has, what their experience is. If someone has experience because they went to a demonstration, that's different than someone who's been involved, who's had training, or facilitates focus groups, things of that nature. So they're not out of the running, that's my, that's what I think.
Okay, so Rich?
I think to Joe's point is, they're either going to get selected or not selected, and it sounds like there's going to be another level of vetting if they're not selected. I mean, if they are selected, right? So my, my question would be, maybe just, maybe just explain it to me, because I could be not understanding it, you know, you guys have spent a ton of time on this, so forgive my ignorance. You know, maybe this is something we ask after other people on the committee, and then we know what everybody's level of expertise is. But by having the question here, I think Joe's point is, you know, it seems like it's, it's a criteria to get into the lottery, and it's not.
Well, it's, it is a criteria to get into this particular bucket, and I, I'm just wondering if we had, oh, good, Elaine's going to be ready, if, do you have experience in the field of diversity, equity, inclusion that would, that will contribute to this, the screening committee's capability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability? I, you know, the, the reason this is so difficult is that this is so difficult, this is, this is a culture change in many ways, and and yet we, we don't want to screen for this, the way we didn't want to screen in terms of a parent who has a student who participates in special education. So, did you have your hand up, Elaine, we were just thinking, oh, good, Elaine? Help us out here.
So in other aspects of my life, I have written surveys, nothing sort of with this focus, but a question like question seven would be considered a deterrent for people whose motives are suspect, let's say, it's a way to keep people honest. So that they actually have to say, oh, someone's going to look at this, I should be honest about whether I say yes or no. Now, the fact that this is a very public process, and we're talking about it right now, probably gives away the farm, and so it, maybe it makes it a little bit of a different experience for people, but usually it's just there, not so much because someone's going to say, going to go through and say, yes, this person is, is worthy, this person is unworthy, but to keep people truthful, if they were thinking about, well, if I could get in an extra bucket, I'll just, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll say yes to everything. And, and question seven gives you a sense that they might verify something to that effect. I do understand Joe's point, that if it's a lottery, it's a lottery, and like, I suppose there are some value judgments there, I mean, for me, if you're a member of a, like a historically marginalized group, I would automatically consider you part of that bucket, because your lived experience means that you have, like, significant experience in this topic. But I can see how other people might think of that differently, so if we think the risk is really minimal, minimal, like, if we don't think that someone's just going to be a jerk and try and try to go against the spirit of the question six, then we probably don't need a question seven. I think it's just there as a, as a safety net.
Okay. Thank you, Elaine. Mike?
The two things, number one, I think we should just vote, just like we did the last question. And if we decide to keep it, then we keep it. And if we don't, we toss it. Rather than belabor the point. And the second question is, is this application only for parents? Because it reads like it's only for parents and that, if I'm a teacher, a lot of these questions might not apply because I'm not an in-district community member, or if I'm an administrator. So is this only for parents?
Mm-hmm, Kathy. Yeah, it is.
There's a, there's a separate, the basic information, a separate one for the NREA and a separate one that'll go out through Brooke's office for principals and central office administrators.
Great.
They don't, they don't have to apply. They have another system for selection.
Great, okay.
So, so what, just to follow up on what Mike's saying. So let's say we have somebody in the district who works in the field, hasn't, and doesn't have anybody in the schools. This wouldn't, that person wouldn't be filling out this application. It certainly may be that someone like that may, may get in touch with us. And there might be some way in that orientation that a person could not be part of the committee, but be, just do, do some kind of a segment. I mean, that's a possibility too, but this is for parents. These are, these are parents. And, and that's what we're looking for. And so Mike's suggestion of just voting on it. So Mike, were you saying just, are you talking about six or seven? You're talking about seven, the explanation?
Seven. Some people.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that that's what you meant. You didn't mean get rid of six. Okay. So I think that that, that is a good idea. Just remembering that we're, we're just doing the best that we can here. And so at least, this might be a baby step. But it's a baby step in the right direction. And the certain amount of trust we have in, in our, in our parent population, we do have that trust.
So, and. Also in favor of keeping number seven, can I see a thumbs up, please? One, two, three, four, five. So five people want to keep it. If you do not want to keep it, great, thumbs up. One, two, three, four, five. Rubenstein. You're the tiebreaker. Want to do it one more time?
Madam Chairman, can I, can I ask a question before you take the poll again? Is this a typo on my application? Or is question seven purely discretionary? All the other questions have asterisks and said they're required. This one seems to be, is this discretionary? So if you answer six, is that your discretion to answer question seven?
So if you require it, then somebody has to put something there. So by not requiring it, you can say that it's discretionary. Or if you, if you answered no to number six, then why would you, you know, answer something to number seven? You see what I'm saying?
No, I said, I asked in question six, I say yes. I could leave seven, seven, I'm not required to answer it. That's what your application says. I don't answer it.
Right, but if.
So, so.
If it's required, then you can't move on unless you answer it correctly.
So you could just, you could make number seven required and put in parentheses, put NA if this is not applicable. That's the only way to get around it.
Right, but to Joe's point, if you make it not required, then someone could write yes for number six and then not answer it.
Right, so they, I assume that they wouldn't then go into the bucket. It was almost as if they answered no.
But how, how can you, how can you divine that? If a person says, pardon me for interrupting, but he puts down, yes. I have this, if it's a lottery, they have to go to that bucket. I'm not required to answer question seven unless you say it's required.
Right, so you could, you could just make it required and say, if this does not apply, please type NA.
So who is going to be, you know, deciding if something goes into a bucket or not? Now we are screening and introducing bias. I see this one person who has all kinds of experience and works in the field. And, you know, that's the person that's going to go in there? That's not the way we're doing anything else in this. And that's, and that's why I don't think that we should have seven anymore. I mean, let's, let's keep this clean. And we're doing it again, you know? Anyway, we're doing what we did before again. Leah?
Madam Chair, is it possible that we could just reword question six a tad so that people understand we qualified the word experience? That would, you know, do you have training and/or experience working in the field of, right? And then you could just get rid of seven. And then it would eliminate the people's needing to imagine if they do have the experience. And I will just interject really quickly, guys, that the question about special ed, it's an incredibly concrete question. You either do or you do not have a child on an IEP. So parents know exactly if they are in that category. Question number six, equally important, matters of diversity, equity, and inclusion. There seems to be, you know, I'm just going to advocate for this group right now that we need to make sure that this person is actually with this experience. It can't be left to chance. And the only way to concretely determine if this person is with the experience prior to them being put on the committee is to ask a qualifying question that will reap the right answers. So if we just tweak six a little bit, I would be fine with getting rid of seven.
So what if we have, do you have training and/or experience in the field of promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion that will contribute to the screening committee's capacity to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in these areas? I agree that that would give us what we're looking for.
Hey, Martin.
How you doing?
Rich?
But.
Madam Chair, Leah, tell me if you think this is a good idea. What if we just.
Hey, Rich, Rich, can I interrupt you? Mary, you're not muted.
She is.
You left the room.
Oh, there she is. Okay, sorry.
I got her. I got her, Leah.
What if we, instead of just making a yes or no question, if we're looking for certain qualities, say, do you have, please check the box of what you have. I have training, I have this. And then there's an other box. And people can type in other, whatever that other is.
I think it actually is okay if you just say in the sentence, do you have training, blah, 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 blah. And if it says yes, then I trust them. I just, I think that it's important just to qualify to, to make sure that this group that we value so much has an advocate as well.
So what I hear people saying is that, or certain people, that they would be comfortable deleting question seven if we change question six to read, do you have training and/or experience in the field of diversity, equity, and inclusion that would contribute to the screening committee's capacity to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in, in promoting these things or something like that? I mean, I need a little more time, but that's the gist of it. And you could get rid of seven. So we do the thumbs up thing. Get rid of seven if we modify number six. Yes? Get rid of seven if we modify number six. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, so we have nine. So we will delete number seven and modify number six.
I just have one question regarding the modification of number six. I want to make sure that however we word this captures what Elaine was getting at when she talked about the lived experience of, you know, an underrepresented group or a minority, people of color, that kind of thing. So I, you know, we're talking about training or experience, but, you know.
There is a lived experience, no?
Sure. I just want to make sure that, that we, we clarify that.
All right, with issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion that would contribute to the screening committee's ability to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion? Do you have training and/or experience with issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion that would contribute to the screening committee's capacity to recognize a candidate's demonstrated ability in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion? Does that capture it?
Yes.
Wayne's giving me a.
No, I, I think that's fine. I think we're dancing a little bit around the elephant in the room. I might just say at the end, like BIPOC and LGBTQ residents encouraged to apply or something like that.
What do you guys think about that?
I would say parents, right? Because they have to be a parent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we say anything about BIPOC and LGBTQ? All right, so what do you want me to say?
And, yeah, encouraged to apply.
All right, so I've got to make sure I get those initials correct because I always screw them up.
Sure, we can talk about it. I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
Well, no, we got to do it, I got to finish it tonight. Get it shipped out tomorrow. So BIPOC, Black, Indigenous, People of Color, correct?
Yep.
BIPOC. And then L-G-T-B-Q? And is there one thing after Q that I always forget?
I, I think now, I'm not an expert on this. Right now, I think it's LGBTQIA.
IA. Anyone? And the IA stands for, excuse my ignorance.
The A is asexual and I, I think, is intersexual? Or am I getting that wrong?
If we, when in doubt, leave it out. I think we got things covered. No? Yes?
Isn't there an LGBTQ plus?
I don't know. That's pretty hip and happen to me, Rubenstein. Is that true?
I, I've seen it.
All right, I'm going to Google it after this meeting. I'll straighten it out. Whatever it is now, I'll put it in there. So we are eliminating seven. And changing six and we're adding BIPOC and LGBTQIA or plus whatever it is. Okay? Any other questions or comments about the survey? Joe?
I apologize, Madam Chairman, but I do have to ask this question.
Apology accepted.
Thank you. I know, I know. People are going to be rolling their eyes with me. I know, I know. Question nine.
Close, yes.
What's, question nine, I answer no. Is my application disqualified?
If you answer no, yes, because you can't attend the meetings.
So that, so that they understand that if a no, a no answer on question nine disqualifies their application?
Yeah.
So that they don't go into anything. They don't, they.
Correct. They go into a spiral of depression for being regressive.
Probably should say that somewhere in here.
I'll make a footnote. That's true. Okay, any, anything else?
I just concur with Mr. Gleason, just maybe put a parenthetical phrase at the end of that question that says, if you're answering no, you will be disqualified from the lottery, something like that.
I think it goes without saying. I think it makes somebody recognize that those are the dates and I can't commit. You know?
To the contrary, Madam Chairman, it, it, it doesn't. It, you, the, the document speaks for itself. There's nothing in here that disqualifies an individual because it's a lottery. People filing this application to go into a lottery. There's nothing that disqualifies them saying, I can't make all the meetings. I still have a chance at being on this committee. If that's not our intent, we need to spell that out clearly.
Well, it's spelled out in the letter and it's spelled out in the, in the introduction. What are the qual, it's, it's, we state very clearly that one of the criteria of, of being considered is that you can make all the meetings.
I would say people might find their way to the application without the letter. So you might just throw the parentheses in there.
So just add, add it beside, no, no, I am unable to commit to the meeting, meetings listed. And I understand that I am therefore disqualified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Anything else?
Kathy, did we make a motion and have it seconded on this? We did, right?
Yes.
We did.
Uh, yes.
So.
So that was low, oh, it was motion three.
I don't have a second, I don't have a second on that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mike seconded it.
Mike, Mike, okay.
Say.
Sharon?
So I can't on the screen see the final question right now, but do we need.
I'm sorry. Oh, wait, wait, I'll get it. Hang on, hang on. Do, the final question is right there. Can you see it, Sharon?
Yes, I can. So then, but, so on the question above, where now we've decided to put, I'm unable to commit and I understand this disqualifies me.
Yep.
Do then we need to put that qualifier below? Or is it, doesn't need a qualifier because there's not an option to say no?
I don't know. Would say you are wise ones.
So if there's only a yes there, and that's permissible to do, why don't we just have a yes under nine? Well, you really want, you really want people to understand, I guess, but. I mean, if somebody, if somebody hits that, if they, if they hit the yes, I can commit.
Why don't you say, change the no answer to, no, I'm not able to commit and therefore I will not be considered part of this lottery?
Yeah, you could do that for both nine and 10.
So what do you want on nine and 10? I got for nine, I understand that this, this disqualifies me from consideration.
Yeah.
And then for number 10, what do you want?
If they, if they say. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I was going to say, if, if they say no to number nine, number 10 is mute.
That's right.
If they say yes to number nine, then yes, that's it. If they say yes to nine, they're going to have to say yes to 10.
And if they do say yes to 10, we get the no in number nine and that disqualifies them.
Right. How simplistic do we have to make this then?
Kathy, point of order.
Yes.
On number nine, I think you need to change that to a multiple choice question.
What do you mean?
Uh, so scroll up just a little bit.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Hang on.
Leah's right. You don't want to be able to check both boxes, right, Leah?
Yeah, so number nine, click on it.
Yep.
And then, yeah.
Okay.
You're like an expert on Google Forms now.
Okay, okay. Any other ones like that, Leah?
So I think that 10 should probably also be multiple choice.
Okay.
Um, but you know, you only give them one choice so that, you know.
Yeah, but, yeah, I get it.
Why not?
So, uh, that's not multiple choice. That's not, that's not, um, is town, is that?
Oh, yeah, that should be multiple choice.
Okay.
Can you get, you can still have another though. Choose to add another, add other if you, on that one. Oh, you did it already. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Or did you type in other or did you choose add other?
No, I, that was there. I didn't.
Yeah, it's an, it's an add other. You have to do the special education question, I think, needs to be multiple choice.
Okay. The school.
Or the candidate's ability, and the candidate's ability, the next one as well, number six.
All right. Okay. Okay, good.
And then a, a nitpicky one on the very last question, superintendency is lowercase. I believe that's a proper noun. And semifinalists should probably be capitalized too. But I'll defer to Dr. McCarthy on that.
You, you really, you really don't have to. It's a category, semifinalists a category, superintendency is a category. So it can be a common noun. It doesn't have to be a proper noun. But you know, if somebody capitalizes it, then it could be stylistic and not the end of the world, but we don't have to.
Thanks for learning me.
It's okay.
Uh, I have one last question.
Amy.
My apologies, but wh- why do we need question three about town, town of residents?
Just so that, I would say just to keep track of representation, even though it's not a consideration, it'd be good to know. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hoping we can move the question and vote.
Can we move the question and vote? We have.
Yes, I would like.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the recommendation of the P S C regarding online application. For the screening committee as edited and amended. And we had a second. And so now we are going to vote. Sharon? Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Me, yes. Uh, Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Good job, you guys. Look at that. So next steps, Leah's going to send me the link. I'm going to make the edits tonight. These will go out tomorrow. People will be able to click on the, the, the live link. And at our next meeting, um, we will have the membership. And the other goal for next weekend is the district profile. Dorothy Presser will be joining us with a survey results and a draft of the um candidate profile. So. Are we good?
Would you like a, a motion to adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
So moved.
Seconded it?
Me, Mary.
Seconded. All right, me, yes. Amy?
Yep, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
For Joe's benefit, yes, very slowly.
Yes.
Um, Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. I will see everyone next Wednesday at our regular meeting. Good work on this and appreciate all the thoughtful discourse and the ideas. So um, good night Elaine. I'm going to finish my homework.